All right, I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, August 13th, 2024, at 7:30 PM at the Brian S. McCarthy Middle School, 41 D. Antonio Drive, and duly noticed in two places, including the city's website, in accordance with the requirements of RSA 91A. Our prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Lopez will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance.
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran. Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Juddy. Alderman Tevo.
Here.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you. I did hear from Alderman Moran, who had a business conflict this evening, and Alderman Juddy, who is on vacation. Also joining us this evening is Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. We're going to go right down to recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings, there being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of June 11th, June 17th, and June 24th, 2024 be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Lisa M. Foto, Director of Public Works, regarding referrals from Board of Aldermen, R-24-069. Communication has been received from Don K. Enright, Treasurer, Tax Collector, regarding Fire Department purchase of four fire marshal vehicles, three Ford Explorers, one Chevrolet Tahoe, from fiscal year 2025 Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, SURF.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Tonight, we have three people signed up. Gary Hoffman.
Do I need to... Oh, there it is. See if I had to push this. First time I've used this. Gary Hoffman, 38 Perham Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. I'm the president of the Nashua Teachers Union, and tonight I am going to speak in favor of Resolution 2465, which is approving the cost items of the collective bargaining agreement between the Nashua Board of Education and the Nashua Teachers Union with their food service contract that would begin September 1st, 2024, and go through August 31st, 2027. You know, this contract, what we were able to do is really get some of the wages of some of our food service workers in a place where it's at least above $15 an hour. Prior to this, you know, we were starting out our elementary cooks under $15 an hour. Our food service assistants were only making about $13.79 an hour, and this new contract really moves up pay significantly in the first year to a place where, you know, where we're a lot more comfortable. You know, the food service contract's largely self-funded, and I do hope that this passes unanimously. These people work hard. They're very important to our school community, and I am meeting with them, with all 90 of them, on August 26th, and I'd love to report that this passes tonight. So, thank you.
Paula Johnson?
Good evening. My name is Paula Johnson. I still live here in Nashua, 15 Westbourne Drive. I see the mayor's not here tonight.
He's not.
Oh, what a shame. We like seeing him at the meetings here. He really should be here. I'm going to talk about 024-0140. I was skimming through this earlier today, and I was just skimming through it now as my life kind of gets in the way sometimes of trying to get here. I noticed, I believe, that handicap parking, if you park in there where you don't belong, is now $250 from $200. Did that go up? Well, anyway, I believe it was $200 to begin with. Well, maybe I'm wrong, but I was the one who made sure that got put into effect here because we had people who shouldn't be parking in handicapped if they didn't have that placard or that plate. Shame on all of them. I think that we are having some increases here. Anyway, I just wanted to say that I hope the barriers on all levels are going to be removed from downtown Nashua because a lot of handicap parking...
That's not on the agenda tonight, Mrs. Johnson.
Okay. We'll just move that right along. I want to talk about 024-016, and I want to commend the Aldermen from Ward Eight to take that 15-minute period away. I hope you'll take that three-minute period away, that we have a little bit longer than three minutes to be able to voice our concerns here because, basically, our First Amendment rights does not put a limit on how much time we have to speak, and since all of you elected to represent us, we listen to when you all babble on. We should have the right to speak longer than three minutes, at least four or five. That's a little bit more if we have a lot to say. Thank you.
Serisa O'Toole. Sorry if I didn't pronounce that right.
That's all right. Thank you. Hi.
Name and address for the record, please.
Serisa O'Toole, 20 Canal Street, Nashua. I'm from Ward Three, and I may not be able to speak because I was coming to offer my support for the resolution and the discussion around stopping arming Israel, and I understand that that's not going to be voted on.
Actually, we're not taking action on that this evening, so...
Yes, I understand.
Okay.
I just want to say I support it. I signed up for the wrong thing. Have a good day.
Thank you. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding replacement vehicles for the fire marshals.
Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to approve the purchase of four 2024 Ford F-150 Lightning EV trucks and associated equipment for the vehicle fit up with Gripeni Ford and global public safety in the amount not to exceed $240,000. Funding will be through Department 152 Fire Rescue Fund, 81500-Vehicles/SURF.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding million-dollar contract award, RWC Enterprises.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve Change Order Four to the 2023 Sewer Rehabilitation Program, Contract Three with RWC Enterprises of Nashua, New Hampshire, in the amount not to exceed $368,798. Funding will be through Department 169 Waste Water Fund, 81700-Infrastructure Improvement/Bond.
You've heard that motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding emergency PO request, New England Boring Contractors.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to approve an emergency purchase order for geotechnical investigation due to concerns regarding the riverbank stability near Lipac D. Nutria Renaissance franchise utilizing the tax increment financing bond with New England Boring Contractors in the amount of
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding multi-year contract award, Haley Ward, Inc.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve a three-year contract for wastewater quality testing services at Nashua landfill sites for the solid waste department with Haley Ward Incorporated of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, in the amount of $205,207.25. Funding will be through Department 168 Solid Waste Fund, 55699 Other Contracted Services General Fund.
Oh, it's water testing, not wastewater testing.
I apologize. Thank you.
No. Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding tax increment finance development program, the Dottie Group. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve and award a contract for enhancements to the East Side Riverfront behind the library with the Dottie Group in the amount not to exceed $9,430. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development Fund, 55699 Other Contracted Services/Riverfront Tiff Fund.
You've heard that motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding multi-year contract
award, Whitney Consulting Group.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve and award a three-year contract for professional consulting services to assist with the assessing office relative to providing chief assessor duties with Whitney Consulting Group in the amount of $360,000 or $120,000 annually. Funding will be through Department 132 Assessing Fund, 53452 Staffing Services/General Fund.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding multi-year contract award, Whitney Consulting Group.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve and award a three-year contract for professional consulting services to assist with the assessing office relative to providing chief assessor duties with Whitney Consulting Group in the amount of $360,000 or $120,000 annually. Funding will be through Department 132 Assessing Fund, 53452 Staffing Services/General Fund.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding tax increment finance development program, Park McDowell.
Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to approve and award a three-year contract with Park McDowell for concept design for the Riverwalk Entranceway/Signage at Bicentennial Park in the amount of $4,640. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development Fund, 81700-Infrastructure Improvement/Riverfront Tiff Fund.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding tax increment finance department program, ED Sweat, Inc.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve Change Order Four with ED Sweat, Inc., to address miscellaneous changes in the work related to coal tar epoxy coating, a corrugated polyethylene pipe under drain steel hand rail modifications, containment and testing of contaminated groundwater, as well as removal of some unused original contract items in the amount of $15,428.16. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development Fund, 81700-Infrastructure Improvement/Riverfront Tiff Fund.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Petitions.
Petition for abatement of real estate taxes pursuant to RSA 7619-A Brownfields property.
There being no objection, I will accept the petition for abatement of real estate taxes pursuant to RSA 7619-A Brownfields property and refer it to the Budget Review Committee.
Petition for street discontinuance portion of Veterans Memorial Parkway right-of-way.
There being no objection, I'll accept the petition for street discontinuance portion of Veterans Memorial Parkway right-of-way, refer to the committee on infrastructure and the Nashua City Planning Board, and schedule a public hearing on Wednesday, September 25th, at 7:00 PM in the Aldemantic Chamber. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Board of Public Works Retirement System Trustees, David Fredette, new appointment, term to expire December 31st, 2025, 4 Henry Drive, number 408, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062. Nashua Arts Commission, Jane Marquise, new appointment, term to expire September 11th, 2027, 4 Farley Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064. Nashua Center for the Arts Board of Trustees, Amber Morgan, reappointment, term to expire February 14th, 2025, 20 Lock Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 3rd, 2024 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the June 5th, June 6th, June 12th, and June 24th, 2024 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the reports of the June 5th and June 20th, 2024 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the June 13th, 2024 Ad Hoc Capital Debt Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 13th, 2024 Ad Hoc Capital Debt Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 25th, 2024 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
Cultural Connections Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Ida Nadir, 130 Flagstone Drive, Apartment 4, Nashua, to the Cultural Connections Committee with a term to expire May 28th, 2027. Is Ida here? No, she will be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R-24-063 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $500,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs Invest NH Demolition Grant Program in approval for the city to grant said funds to Blaylock Holdings, LLC, for demolition of the Mohawk Sanary site through a grant agreement.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-24-063 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
Is there a discussion on that motion? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
He stepped out for a minute.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tevo.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2463 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-065, approving the cost items of the collective bargaining agreement between the Nashua Board of Education and the Nashua Teachers Union local 1044 AFT/AFL CIO Unit D food service workers from September 1st, 2024 through August 31st, 2027.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-24-065. I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
This is the food service workers, many of which will be working behind those three doors in a few weeks, and they are a hard-working group, did a lot during COVID, and deserved this contract, and most of, if not all, the funding for this contract is not from the city's general revenue fund, it's from their self-funding, so...
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I will vote in favor of this, as I did at the Budget Committee. I just wanted to point out, as I did in committee, that when we approved the contract under Resolution R-22032, the final year of the contract, which we're still in, states that the contract will cover 90 employees and pay them $1.375 million. In actuality, the first year, they're building that base off of now fiscal year 24. We're still in that contract, and we have 110 employees paying them $2,54,981. Still plan on supporting it, but I just wanted to point that out for the record.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2465 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-066 relative to the supplemental appropriation of $301,026.90 of fiscal year 2024 unanticipated revenue into Fund Number 7024 Opioid Abatement Expendable Trust Fund.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'd like to move for final passage of R-24066 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tevo.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2466 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-068 relative to the transfer of $246,000 from Department 193 Debt Service Account, 75200, interest to Department 159 Hydrants Fire Protection Account, 54835 hydrant fees.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion for final passage of R-24-68.
Motion is for final passage. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2468 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-069, authorizing a tower cell site lease agreement with Dish Wireless LLC regarding a wireless communications facility located at 10 Whipple Street.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-24069.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2469 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O-24-014 amended, increasing fees and fines in the parking ordinances.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to amend O-24014 by replacing it with a Goldenrod copy of the recommended amendments made at the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
Motion is to amend by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy. Discussion. Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. This is truly an important proposed amendment to the current legislation that we have on the books for a number of reasons. The increase in the parking fines is truly is minimal. The, in my opinion, the importance is the toughness that we start to have with some of our, the parking fines. We, in the past, have kind of handicapped our parking enforcement in that if fines were paid, they, pardon the, I don't want to call it a crime, but if they did the crime, so to speak, time after time and just paid it, they could continue to do it with no ramifications for it. They continued to park in the same spot, they paid the $25 fine, and it was cheaper for them to just pay the fine than it was to, to, for lack of a better term, to do the right thing. And in the case of some of my constituents, they were having to put up with people parking in front of their home, where we put a no parking sign, or parking the wrong way, parking on the curb so that they couldn't get out of their door. And parking enforcement and even our police were kind of stuck because the law said if they didn't have any outstanding parking, we couldn't tow them. This changes this. It changes it that says that if they pay the fine, but they do it time and time again over a three-year period, we can now tow them. If they are habitual offenders, we can now do something about it. It puts teeth into our laws, it helps our police, it helps our enforcement, and it helps our citizens that do the right thing. And it says to those that are habitual offenders, or scofflaw, I think is what it's called, and it says to them, we're not going to put up with this anymore. And the majority of our citizens are good people, and they're not going to get caught up in this. It doesn't put up the fines so much that it's going to affect those that do the right thing, but it does say, please don't do this. As far as increasing the handicap fines, it doesn't really increase the fines so much for parking where they shouldn't park as much as if you don't pay it within 15 days, you're going to, the fee is going to go up to $350. You don't pay it for 31 to 89 days, that might go up to $500 and so on. So, we've kind of escalated that kind of fee. But my biggest concern was that we started increasing the fines for those and escalating the days longer than just a one-year period. We now have four times you've done it within a three-year period, and it gives our code, I'm sorry, not code enforcement, our parking enforcement and our police more teeth to be able to help them and do that. So, it is truly an important piece of legislation that we pass, and it won't hurt, I don't believe it'll hurt the one-time offender as much as it'll hurt those that are scofflaws, and we have a handful of them that they don't care. They park going the wrong way, and they do it time after time, even though the police have come. And I can tell you for a fact that we have one individual that I can tell you has been towed, and an hour after being towed, paying for that tow, turned around and parked right in the same place after the police towed them, and it was disgraceful. And I can tell you that the person who had to put up with that in front of their home and could not open up their front door has had to put up with that time after time. has had to put up with that time after time, had their, their door ruined, had, was within inches of their gas line. So it's a scary situation. So I hope that this board will unanimously pass this. Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. I, so, I thought I had looked over this, um, I've looked over this a million times, but, uh, I just noticed something tonight and wanted to see if somebody, maybe, Director Hanham, uh, or Cummings might know the answer to this. I don't see the Elm Street Garage listed in here, uh, on the legislation, so. But I, I, I could be. Well, I, let me, let me clarify that. I see the Elm Street Garage in Zone Three where it says street level only, but that's the only place I see it listed on the legislation.
Director Hanham, did you want to reply?
Sure. Liz Hanham, Economic Development Director. Yes, it, it, it is the, the only place that is open to the public is that first level. So all of the, the rest of the levels going up in Elm Street Garage are, um, monthly passes or, or city staff.
Okay, I guess I didn't realize that because the High Street Parking Garage, oh, that's not on here either, I guess. It's, I, that's the High Street Parking Lot. Okay. Okay, thank you. I, I, I misread that for the millionth time.
Motion is to amend. Is there further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I'd like to move to further amend Section three twenty-eighty-seven B offenses and fines by renaming the first column heading escalation schedule to violation-based amount if paid within fifteen days. Title Column Two to violation amount if paid within sixteen to thirty days. Title Column Three to violation amount if paid within thirty-one to eighty-nine days. And Title Column Four, violation amount if paid ninety-plus days. This, if I could speak to it.
Alderwoman Kelly.
This was my requested amendment. I, I brought it up during the committee, um, and then after thinking about it yet again, I felt strongly that we needed to just clarify this language. I feel like I got punished by having to read out every single word, but I just, it was originally called escalation schedule, which I thought made it seem like you were having that base fee, and then each time that was how much more you added on. So this is just clarifying that it's, this is exactly what you pay. It's not in addition to what you had previously paid. Semantics, but I thought it was important. Thank you.
Motion is to further amend. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I'd like to move for final passage of O twenty-four oh fourteen as amended, and I'd like to speak to it, please.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I was holding my comments, um, until we got through our, um, amendments here. Uh, this, this is piece of legislation has gone through quite a bit of hands, a lot of work. A consultant came into the, uh, committee and spoke to us about it. Um, it has come out of the, um, parking study that was done. They looked at a lot of different towns. So we wanted to make sure that this was fair and not overly punitive. But to my colleague's point, um, did address some of the things that had been happening in Nashua. And I thank her for being such a, uh, steward of making those additional edits to make sure uh, our police and our, our parking, um, can enforce this. So I think it's a good piece of legislation. It's something that we've been talking about around this table for a long time. Um, and I think it'll go a long way in helping with downtown parking. Thank you.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you. Um, yeah, it's been a long time since we've, um, updated any of this stuff. I want to say it was two thousand and eleven was the last time that this was updated. So it's been some time and we've, you know, I, I, I think that the parking study, um, gave us a good blueprint. I think what we had in place was a good blueprint from two thousand and eleven to kind of build upon. And I think this was a, a good compromise that was come to. And, um, you know, it's not easy to, to go back to people and, and have to say, you know, that we're raising costs of things, but the reality is, is that the parking garages need rehabilitation and we need a way to be able to pay for that. And so charging the people that, that, that use those facilities and that use our, our parking infrastructure makes the most sense, uh, to me. So, uh, with that said, I, I am going to support this.
Alderman Cle.
I, I know by saying I'm going to make a brief comment is kind of a, a joke, but I truly am. I just really want to thank, um, Ms. Stansfield, who worked so hard, um, with all of the organizations and the Personnel Committee who, who, um, and Chairwoman, uh, Chairwoman, uh, Kelly, who worked so hard on all of this. It was a group effort and they did a phenomenal job. So thank you to all of them.
Alderman Tebow.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I think the, the thing that really made sense to me is when I saw, um, the slide that showed our fines and our, our, uh, you know, violations compared to other cities and towns in New England and Mon- Montana for some reason. And I thought that was interesting and I thought it, it made sense. So that kind of says we were behind a little bit in where we needed to be. So uh, I'm glad that this got put through and thank you for everybody that worked on it. I will support it.
Further discussion? Motion is for final passage of Ordinance twenty-four fourteen as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Ordinance twenty-four fourteen is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero one six amended regarding the time limit for public comment.
Alderman Tebow.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend, uh, O dash twenty-four dash zero one six by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of recommended amendments made at the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you. Um, so this, uh, ordinance change is to clean up some language in there, and I'll speak more to it at the, when I, I go to final passage of the, the whole ordinance. The part that was changed was the cleanup to the last sentence where it said that upon vote a majority of the board, we could extend the time limit to, to thirty minutes. It just made no sense if we're going to wipe out the fifteen to add that piece in there as well. So um, the Personnel Committee decided that they wanted to clean that up and I supported it. So, um, that's basically what this amendment part is.
Okay. Discussion on the amendment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderman Tebow.
I'd like to, to move for final passage of O dash twenty-four dash zero one six as amended, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Tebow.
So, I mean, I had, I actually had some, some people reach out about the fifteen-minute time limit. We don't ever enforce it. So to me, I feel like that could get us in trouble if we ever decide to enforce it because then people will come to us saying, did you pick and choose who you're enforcing it with and who you're not? So I felt like we either got to start enforcing it or we got to take it out of the ordinance. And I figured the way we do things, it's probably best to take it out of the ordinance. You know, if you did the three minutes times, you know, five, you'd get five people that could speak during that fifteen minutes. We often have a few more people than that. Um, you know, the Board of Ed decides to vote every fifteen minutes to decide if they want to go further. So I don't, I, I think the best, best thing to do is just to take it out and listen to the, the amount of people we, I mean, we've had some big votes and we've had a lot of people speak and we've always let everybody that was here speak. So I just wanted to clean up the ordinance so we can keep it out of any, any trouble with legal in, in case we ever do decide to enforce it.
Okay, the motion is for final passage as amended. Alderman Lopez.
Uh, just to the maker of the motion, this is relevant to the Board of Alderman meetings, it looks like, according to the ordinances. Is that the case or does it also include, or did you intend for it to include committee meetings?
Madam President.
Alderman Tebow.
I think, uh, the, the ordinance we got, got here is just for the Board of Alderman. I mean, I assume we'd want to do it for the committees too, um, but I think this particular ordinance is just focused on the Board of Alderman.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, just to my colleague from Ward Force's point, there is actually, um, as you go down in the, um, the city revised ordinances, um, further than the section that we're working with here, there is language that indicates that the prescribed procedures for, um, for public comment apply to both uh, meetings of the full Board of Alderman and, um, meetings of standing committees.
Thank you for clarifying that. You've heard the motion. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Ordinance twenty-four sixteen is duly adopted.
Second reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero two one, updating the insurance and risk management ordinances.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O twenty-four zero twenty-one.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries and Ordinance twenty-four twenty-one is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero two three, prohibiting electronic participation in meetings if the person is participating from outside the United States.
Alderman O'Brien.
Okay, oh. Thank you, I got it. I would like to make the motion, Madam President, for indefinite postponement of O dash twenty-four dash zero two three.
Motion is for indefinite postponement. Discussion on that motion. Alderwoman Kelly.
I just wanted to note that I spoke to Alderman Moran and he is, um, quite happy with taking this off the table.
Okay. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Ordinance twenty-four twenty-three is indefinitely postponed.
Second reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero two five, amending the KEIF Auditorium Commission.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of vote twenty-four twenty-five.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Ordinance twenty-four twenty-five is declared duly adopted. Business unfinished at the previous meeting. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion to remove from the table R dash twenty-four dash zero three five.
Um, I'm not sure actually that we're ready to take that from the table at this point. Alderman Clemens.
Is this a debatable motion?
No.
Okay.
Well, I.
It's not debatable, that's right. Okay, the motion is to remove from the table Resolution twenty-four thirty-five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The nays have it. And Resolution twenty-four thirty-five will remain on the table. New business resolutions.
First reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero seven zero, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed fourteen million four hundred thousand dollars for various improvements at the Solid Waste Department Four Hills Landfill.
Additional sponsors: Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cle, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lopez, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign it to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four at seven P M. in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero seven one, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed one million fifty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars for various wastewater capital improvements.
Additional sponsors: Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cle, Alderman Senate, Alderman Lopez, Alderman O'Brien. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, August twenty-sixth, excuse me, two thousand twenty-four at seven P M. in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero seven two, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed three million eight hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for the city's sewer infrastructure improvement and sewer and drain casting replacement programs.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Senate, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four at seven P M. in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero seven three, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to borrow an amount not to exceed four million one hundred ninety-two thousand dollars through the issuance of bonds and/or a loan through the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services State Revolving Loan Fund for the Wastewater Treatment Plant Phase One Upgrades Project.
Additional sponsors: Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cle, Alderman Senate, Alderman Lopez, Alderman O'Brien. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four at seven P M. in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero seven four, approving the cost items of a sidebar agreement between the Nashville Board of Police Commissioners in Teamsters Local six thirty-three regarding the city's insurance contributions in authorizing related transfers.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Govea, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemens, Alderman Cle, Alderman Tebow, sorry, Alderwoman Kelly. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero seven five, recognizing the United Nations Universal Declaration of Human Rights and urging the responsible moral oversight of and accountability for military equipment used by international allies.
Additional sponsors? Seeing none, I will assign that to the Human Affairs Committee and the Cultural Connections Committee.
First reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero seven six, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of one million dollars from the United States Environmental Protection Agency Multi-Purpose Grant Program into community development grant activity Brownfields Multi-Purpose Grant for the purpose of Brownfields Assessment and Remediation Activities.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cle, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Senate. Given its first reading, I will assign that, I'm sorry?
Alderman Clemens as well.
Alderman Clemens, thank you. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four at seven P M. in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero seven seven, supporting the five-year General Fund General Obligation Bonding Plan recommended by the Ad Hoc Joint Mayoral Board of Alderman Committee on Capital Expenditures and Debt Service Plan.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion to suspend the rules for a second reading of Resolution R dash twenty-four dash seven seven.
Motion is to suspend the rules for a second reading. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero seven seven, supporting the five-year General Fund General Obligation Bonding Plan recommended by the Ad Hoc Joint Mayoral Board of Alderman Committee on Capital Expenditures and Debt Service Plan.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion for final passage of Resolution R dash twenty-four dash zero seven seven.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Lopez.
Um, so I think the intent of limiting our bonding or managing and, and anticipating it is, is very responsible and definitely, uh, needed. I am concerned because one of the presentations that struck me particularly to the Ad Hoc Committee was why, was by the Department of Public Health, and they had presented, um, need and potential planning for, um, budgeting for an emergency shelter program, which I feel is very urgently needed in the city of Nashua. I don't know whether it was a miscommunication or misunderstanding, but that was what I had understood we would be seeing at the special, uh, joint committee last week, um, from public health. They did present pretty thoroughly and comprehensively on the state of homelessness in Nashua and the different efforts underway. I haven't seen any formal proposals, so I can only assume that they're not at the shovel-ready point yet, even though the colder weather is approaching. So to that point, I think it's very, very important for us to set this ordinance in motion. I just hope that we are open to the needs of all of our constituents. This doesn't become like a mandate. And alternatively, I hope that we do find other sources or other ways to address the needs that we see in our community. So that's my only reservation, but I do intend to vote for this.
Thank you. Alderman Gueva.
Thank you, Madam President. Sitting on the ad hoc commission for this and going through the presentations we saw as a committee and coming up with a plan that was, we thought was best for the city, and I think we came up with a good one. I think it's a good five-year plan. I think it's something we can all look at. At the beginning, there was definitely compromise on this. At the beginning, we had one plan that spent up to the limit of what we could, and then we were able to kind of talk that back, look at what projects we really thought we needed to prioritize, and then bring it so there was a cushion of about five million a year that would be used for miscellaneous projects, emergencies, things like that. I think at the end of the day, we came up with a really good plan and I'm happy to support it. And I urge my colleagues to do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I echo the statements from my colleague from Ward One. It just definitely was a compromise and it was... It took a lot longer than I think the, maybe the city staff thought it might. But that was, that was a good thing because I think in the end, we came up with a document that will help us, guide us through the next five years of what really our priorities are. And it's not to say, to Alderman Lopez's point, it's not to say that they won't change or that something else might come up. But really what we wanted to do was build in a cushion there for things that are unforeseen. You know, so we have that with this plan. I think if we stick to that, we'll be in good shape and the taxpayers will be better off for it.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. To what both of my colleagues have said, it was necessary to bring the cushion into play. And I think it was actually brought up to my, from my colleague in Ward One that it was necessary, that we had to build in that cushion and that we, it was, it was a must. We also discussed that no project under a million dollars would go into that, that plan. That was something that would, we would not do a bond for anything under a million dollars. We would have to figure out a way of funding it through the budget. We weren't just going to, to, to do that. So it made us have to think about how we were going to, to budget. It, I think building in that cushion was something that was extraordinarily important. And to say that there were, there were painful cuts is, to say the least. There are going to be things that if people are going to say, why didn't you? We, we just couldn't. I don't remember, you know, what the wish list for shelters were, but I don't think that we necessarily said, we're not going to do this, we're not going to do that. But we kind of said, what is it that we have to do? What is already kind of obligated? And we worked from there and kind of worked backwards. So, thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. Clarifying question for anybody that was on, on the ad hoc committee. We just went through some first readings of bonding, which, I just did the quick math, was about twenty-five million dollars in bonding. Does the ad hoc committee, does the, the plan that, that this calls for, is that bonding that is discretionary, meaning special projects? Or does that include operational bonding like we looked at tonight?
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, those bonds are enterprise fund bonds. They're accounted as in the bonds that we were addressing in this resolution. Those are from a different area of, of the city's structure. And it's for things that have to do with, with BPW projects that are, most of them are usually mandated by federal law.
Okay, thank you.
Motion is for final passage, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution twenty-four seventy-seven is declared duly adopted.
First reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero-seven-eight, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Home Investment Program, American Rescue Plan Act Fund Allocation Plan.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Timmons, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Clea, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero-seven-nine, approving the Mohawk Tannery redevelopment plan to permit the initiation of a redevelopment project in accordance with RSA two-oh-five.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Timmons, Alderman Gueva, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Thibodeau, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Clea, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Senate, and Alderman Clemmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero-two-six, removing the no parking restriction on a section of the east side of Manchester Street.
Additional sponsors? Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero-two-seven, no parking on the west side of Zellwood Street.
Additional sponsors? Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero-two-eight, requiring food service until midnight for charitable gaming facilities that extend their hours of on-premises sales of alcoholic beverages to two AM.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Timmons, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Clea, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Senate, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero-two-nine, no parking on the south side sections of Spit Brook Road.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Gueva, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Thibodeau. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero-three-zero, authorizing stop signs on Fairlane Avenue, Forest Park Drive, Knollwood Avenue, and Wildwood Lane.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Sullivan. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero-three-one, establishing a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit on Fairlane Avenue, Forest Park Drive, and Knollwood Avenue.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Sullivan. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero-three-two, amending liaison ordinances.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Timmons, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Clea. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Got a couple of committees that are going to be pretty busy. Okay. Period for public comment. We have five individuals who have signed up. Megan Schmidt. Please give your name and address for the record. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Megan Schmidt and I live at three Oak Hill Lane in Nashua, New Hampshire. Oh-three-oh-six-two zip code. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Council. I come here tonight with one irrefutable fact. The largest population of child amputees in the world are trapped in Gaza by Israel's military and they are quite literally being blown apart by weapons manufactured in this country. Children just like my nieces, even younger, who can no longer hold colored pencils to draw a picture or kick a soccer ball. And if by some miracle that they're not killed or maimed, they are being starved, deprived of safety, clean water, and education, and they are constantly on the run from Israeli bombardment. And nothing that Israel has been doing in the past nine months has been precise, has been surgical. Their war is one of collective punishment, a crime under international law. And after almost a year, finally the ceasefire position is deemed reasonable and not radical, but it is disingenuous, disingenuous to say guns down, guns down, while still handing one side boxes of bullets. The Biden administration will not stop sending weapons to Israel until there is nationwide condemnation of our participation in their slaughter of Gaza and the West Bank. The destructive alliance of the United States and Israel has made every taxpayer guilty. And we did not, we did not ask for this. We have been made complicit in murder without our consent. I am asking you to be a conscientious objector to this massacre. Your voice is not small. Every four years, New Hampshire is first in the nation and Nashua is no small town. When people in Manchester and Concord need to be in Boston, they have to drive through our city. So maybe they'll listen to us and follow our lead in saying no. Our citizens object to these proxy wars that destabilize thriving communities and ruin innocent lives. I was recently, I took place, recently I took place in a first responder training for mass shooting events with firefighters, medics, and police officers. And they use a twofold approach in these situations. Stop the killing, stop the dying. And the dying cannot stop until the killing ends. And the killing cannot stop without an arms embargo, or embargo from the United States. Thank you, Council. Free Palestine.
Nicholas Calera.
Hello again, Board. My name is Nick Calera to Paddington Place here in Nashua. And I'm here once again to compel you all to discuss and pass a comprehensive ceasefire resolution regarding the ongoing genocide in Gaza. Since we have all been here last, a lot has happened. Thankfully, as we heard earlier, Alderman Lopez has written and submitted a resolution calling for a permanent anti-hostilities in Gaza, as well as the guidance to follow our own country's laws regarding supplying weapons of war. This is an innewably great step in the right direction and I thank Alderman Lopez and Rabbi John for their good faith conversation on the topic. I find it sad that it took this long, but I'm happy that we finally got here. As for the rest of you, Board, I hope you all follow Alderman Lopez's lead and join in these discussions. So much by way of good news and let us get into the reality on the ground in Gaza. Israel has once again committed mass murder with weapons that we provided to them. Well, multiple mass murders, that is. Last week alone, Israel bombed four schools in seven days and I'll elaborate on one such instance. Early Saturday morning, as dozens of worshippers, mainly women and children, were performing their morning prayers, Israel dropped three high-powered munitions directly into the courtyard of a school-turned-shelter in Gaza's Daraj district. This clear violation of international and humanitarian law led to the deaths of over one hundred civilians. And not just death, but complete and utter annihilation. I have pictures here that I'll pass around that can show you all the carnage. Reports have been coming out detailing the brutality. Responders to the scenes have reported that they have been unable to find a complete corpse in any of the wreckage. As one father Hassan said about the Israeli operation that murdered his six-year-old son, quote, "I told them," the responders at the scene, "my son Ali was six. They gave me a plastic bag with eighteen kilos of body parts and told me to bury it. I don't know if it's my son or not. We can't find his body anywhere." The munitions that did this, three two-thousand-pound bombs, were made right here in the United States of America. Three Boeing-manufactured GBU thirty-nine small-diameter bombs mutilated and slaughtered over one hundred innocent civilians. The same day this massacre took place, Joe Biden and the State Department signed off on a weapon shipment of over six thousand JDAMs, or Joint Direct Attack Munitions, to Israel, as well as another release of funds totaling over three and a half billion dollars. Just today, they released another twenty billion dollars. JDAMs, as created by Boeing, Raytheon, and BAE Systems, are guidance kits that turn dumb bombs into smart bombs. Now, I know many of you are parents, so let's use an analogy. If your child takes a Crayola marker and starts drawing on the wall, what would you do? Now, I, of course, am not a parent, but in my opinion, the wrong choice of action would to be go out to the store and buy that child a brand-new pack of Sharpies to do the same thing again. Now, no, I would punish the child and take away the markers. It's time for America to stop the genocide, take away the markers, and cut off all armed shipments to Israel. Ceasefire and embargo now, and from the river to the sea, Palestine will be free. Thank you.
Bradley Conway.
Hello, Bradley Conway from Manchester. When your friend is drunk, you take the keys away, period. You don't jump in the car with them and tell them you'd support them financially if they drove around and threw firebombs at all their neighbors' houses. You don't give them more beers, you don't assemble and hand them firebombs. If you did, you yourself would be an accessory to their crimes. Israel is drunk with impunity and heavy artillery and New Hampshire is along for the ride. We need to take a sober look at how New Hampshire federal leaders like Jeanne Shaheen, Maggie Hassan, Annie Custer, and Chris Pappas are culpable in Israel's war crimes. Exports of U.S. arms to foreign militaries are regulated by U.S. federal law under the Arms Export Control Act. The Leahy laws are amendments to the Arms Export Control Act which prevent, which prevent, quote, "Assistance to any unit of the security forces of a foreign country of the Secretary of State has credible information that such a unit has committed a gross violation of human rights." Just this weekend, mere hours after every New Hampshire leader in Congress voted to approve another three-point-five billion dollars in weapons sales to Israel, one hundred Gazan civilians were cut to pieces as they were praying when Israel bombed the school with U.S. weapons. According to those on the ground who cleaned up the bodies, not a single corpse in the school was left whole by the bombing. Surviving family members were given bags of randomly, random unidentified body parts to bury and pray over. Just anecdotally, literally, as I was writing this speech, another twenty billion dollars, as Nick mentioned, was approved to Israel today. Israel is a country whose leaders flagrantly disregard U.S. and international law in pursuit of their stated objective of destroying and colonizing their geographical neighbors. Its parliament is currently debating whether or not rape is permissible in their prisons, which currently detain up to fifteen thousand Palestinian hostages, which have been, and have, which have recently been described as a network of torture camps by Israeli Human Rights Org, Betzlam. The taxpayers of Nashua refuse to continue enabling this wanton devastation of humanity. Please support this resolution and help Nashua do its part to acknowledge the illegal activity of New Hampshire's criminal federal representative delegation. We, the people of New Hampshire, demand our federal representatives comply with U.S. Leahy laws and immediately halt approval of all future military aid and arms sales to Israel until it complies with international law, until it ends its brutal fifty-seven-year military occupation of the West Bank, until it ends its seventeen-year siege and imprisonment of Gaza, until refugees across the diaspora are allowed to return to their homes that are rightfully theirs under international law, until Israel's bloodlust is quelled by calls for honesty and accountability. We demand sanctions until Israel, on Israel until Palestine is free.
Thirty seconds.
Speaking now to Jeanne Shaheen, Maggie Hassan, Annie Custer, and Chris Pappas, your cruelty towards Arab and Muslim people is legendary. You are truly heartless and rotten. The level of audacity you've reached in order to betray your constituents for the sake of power and money and white supremacy is breathtaking. You will be remembered as butchers. May your careers be over, may you resign in disgrace, may you be haunted by the countless human lives you've ruined. May the city of Nashua and the state of New Hampshire unite against you and all genocide Democrats and allow us to heal from the infections you've cultivated in our society. Free Palestine.
Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, forty-one Berkeley Street. The last time I came out and spoke to the Board was at the budget hearing on June seventeenth, so it's been a couple of months. And I think you all know, we got a recent court order on my right-to-know case and I'm sure some city leaders are disappointed in the outcome. It would have liked to have seen me do worse. But, you know, I did okay on that case. And I want to address the conduct in the budget hearing when right-to-know issues came up and the money spent, the five-hundred thousand dollars spent is particularly on this case to beat me as a pro se litigant. I was, you know, shocked by the amount of money spent. I'm actually trying to get the total cost spent on that and the, the city is resisting providing me with the numbers. I'm on my third try on a right-to-know to get the data. But the mayor's comments were very disappointing. He was very defensive and cantankerous. He said, "You lose all the time, you know, Lori's the big loser. She wastes all our money, everything gets dismissed." She sued volunteers of the city, referring to the two-oh-one corp board members, which was untrue. I did not sue any individuals of the boards. I named the corporations in the suit, but no individuals were named. And, and Mayor Donches is a lawyer. You know, he's attacking a citizen from the position of being a mayor, being a licensed attorney, whether it's inactive or not, and being a defendant in these cases. And there are rules of conduct he is supposed to abide by that I don't think he really does abide by. I think that harsh punishment of citizens who go forward and do this kind of work is unnecessary. You know, the kind of work I've done is really difficult. I'd like to see all of you get up there, try to be a pro se litigant, get hauled up to the Supreme Court when you don't want to have to defend anything or be up there. Defend it and work as hard as I've had to work to try and win my cases. Most people lose them completely. Um, most people lose them completely. So I'm thankful when I get what I get, but it's been a long, bruising battle. It's totally shaken my faith in the legal judicial system. I don't think it's an institution with much honor in this state. I really don't. My time in there has taught me, if I were a minority in this state, I would run before I'd enter that legal judicial system.
Thirty seconds.
It is a very privileged, powerful Ivy League white man's game, and there was not a lot of room at the table for me, I'll tell you. So I am, you know, really disappointed by what I had to go through. And I'm disappointed in the lack of policy that continues to not be written, uh, the resistance of the city to open some doors and work with me. And, you know, litigation will continue because, as the court said, we know it will continue. So I'll, I'll be back to talk further, do some writing. Thank you.
Good evening again. My name is Paula Johnson. I guess I still live here in Nashua, haven't moved yet. And what Ms. Ordolano was talking about, it's really called the Good Old Boy Network that still exists here in Nashua, which will never leave. I'd like to say something about the bonding of special projects here. You got your bonding for like the landfill, one people bonding, and then for regular city stuff. When you add it up, it's still bonding, no matter how you slice or dice it, the taxpayers are going to pay. So am I going to pay 25,000 out of, 25 million out of one pocket and 30 million out of the other, and it's $55 million? So you're probably going to go over that 30 million bucks, no matter how you look at it, because you're taking it from two different sources, but you're still going to be bonding, and the taxpayers are going to pay for it. With this group of people here, I get your plea and what you're fighting for. This is really the wrong venue. You're talking about Annie Custer, Pappas, and all of them. You know what? It's a federal issue. And you know, you're right. The taxpayers are spending all this money for wars. There shouldn't be any wars, okay? So the only issue here, what you do is you stop paying your federal taxes, and that's what we all do. You go and protest that your taxes, and you tell your elected officials where you want your money to go. And unfortunately, they don't listen to us. And they've been down in Washington too long because there's no such thing as term limits. There should be term limits in Nashua. There should be term limits at the State House, and there should always be term limits in Washington. And although Alderman Clemens thinks it's funny, I don't think so. Because when you have one party rule, and you have the same people sitting here over and over and over again, we, the people, are never heard. And I know, Madam, you and I had a differences of one, at one meeting where you couldn't get up to speak because I had the time. And maybe we can discuss it later on, because I don't like to fight with anybody, except the, my elected officials, really. But you know what? The bottom line is because I know everybody here. I've known them for years. I've sat on the board with many of them, and if not, I've known their family here. But you know what? In order to get things done, and people don't realize, you've got to vote these people out of office and let them know, because you're, you're talking about the wrong things, whether I agree with you or not. The more you keep these people in office, the less they listen to you, because they are funded by big corporations, and they take the money. And unless you change the rules on how your funding is, it's always going to stay the same. So that's what you have to do. We have an election coming up shortly in November, and if you're upset with the Biden administration, vote them all out of office. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment, period. Remarks by members of the board? I'm going to start over here tonight. Remarks? Alderman Lopez.
Three remarks. I'm not even sure if you can hear me, but hopefully you can. First, I just want to acknowledge the space we're in and the hard work led by Alderman Dowd to, to get this space built around us. It's, I am looking forward to it coming online. I am sad to see the Elm Street Junior High's contributions to the city's closing a chapter, but I think there's more that we can do there, so I'm looking forward to that. I just wanted to take note of the space that we were in. Additionally, I wanted to comment on my ordinance. There's certainly free speech and public comment, and it's a very complicated and divisive issue. My ordinance is trying to navigate exactly what Nashua's role is, and our roles are as elected officials and hearing our constituents. Even though there is a tragedy happening overseas that affects many, many people, I think that we need to be able to be focused on the people here, our neighbors and our, um, our constituents, hearing their voices, maintaining respectful dialogue, and trying to see our way towards living and coexisting peacefully here in Nashua. So that's my intent. I hope my fellow members of the board will read the, um, the ordinance as, or the resolution as, as it is written. There's a lot in there that I would not endorse, I do not intend to embrace from the river to the sea, or any neutralization of either state. And I hope that internationally, we are negotiating for peace, and we are looking for a solution to stabilize that region. And then finally, I wanted to acknowledge the passing of Phil Mello. It was announced by his family yesterday morning. Phil has been a established member of our community for many years in the tree streets. I know on this board, many members recall, we had a slight disagreement over police supervision and oversight, and during that meeting, a message that I had sent to the police commissioners about trying to strengthen the utility of police response to situations that were frequently experienced by individuals like Phil was read into the record. And it was my concern at the time that that was going to stigmatize Phil, and that was going to make his situation, which was very unfortunate, a political football. And I think instead, it was treated ultimately respectfully, and people recognized that, that there is a need to expand police capacities. And since then, we've launched a number of programs, which I actually identified as, as needing to come about, a closer partnership with the Public Health Department, better access by police officers to social workers and homeless outreach workers. I think those things are all starting to come into focus. There's a lot more work to be done, and unfortunately, I don't know that we did as much as we could have done for people like Phil in time for Phil. I hope we're able to intervene. We see people who are constantly struggling with addiction, constantly struggling with homelessness. I hope we're able to step to that side of the road and help them, rather than stepping across and trying to pretend we don't see them. Because there's a lot more to Phil than what other people labeled him as, or, you know, dismissed him as. He was, he had a family, he had his loved ones, he had friends, and he had many, many neighbors who stopped and helped him. And if nothing else can be said about Phil, he taught us that we have to stop and help each other. So I just want to express my condolences to his family, and I hope that he rests in
Alderwoman Kelly. It's a weird setup. Thank you. I also wanted to just point out, the middle school, we all were able to walk around a bit. It's an incredible space, and I thank everybody who had such a hand in that. We ended in the kitchen, which was beautiful. So it was nice to hear that we are going to be compensating the food workers at over 15 an hour so that they can have a fair wage, and some of them will get to work in that gorgeous kitchen. Just like other couple of notes here, really excited to see the four EV trucks. Also had the honor of attending the ribbon cutting at Monahan Manor. Really powerful stuff to be there and talk to everybody, not only residents, but people who've been working on this, you know, for many years, and, and just really look at the moment when we went from 48 units to 216 units. As I was leaving, I had someone who was a resident come up to me and just tell me that it had changed her life completely, that she had a son with special needs, and since they had moved, it had just made a tremendous difference in their lives, and they were just beautiful, beautifully done. So really grateful to have that in our community, and I know that we'll all be doing more of that because we need it.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, just a couple of things. As you can see, the school is, is very near ready to open in a couple of weeks, on the It seems like yesterday, this was just a bunch of trees and fields, and now it's a beautiful school that we can all enjoy. Just a couple of things. This is probably one of the safest schools, if not the safest school, in the country. Our students that go here will be well-protected, unfortunately, because of the way things are today in, in the society. But this school is extremely safe, as is the other two middle schools that we, we worked on. But this has been designed from the ground up. And it's, so a lot of people are involved in, in this, a lot of hours, and I thank everybody that was involved, including all of our contractors that did just an outstanding job. We're, we're about 99% completed. There are a few things, as with any big project, as punch list items, but we're working on those, and it's ready for school on the 26th.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I, um, I want to give my condolences to, while I didn't know him, the, uh, family of Phil, and to Alderman Lopez, because I know he meant a lot to you. And the school is beautiful, and there were a lot of pains that went along with it, and I want to give kudos to Alderman McCarthy, who this was his dream. And I'll leave it at that. The, there, there was a lot of legislation that went through here, and the one piece of legislation that meant a lot to me was the, the parking fines and, and so on. And Alderwoman Kelly knows how passionate I, I was about that, and, uh, I, I truly had sleepless nights over that, that one particular one. And when I said that, uh, Ms. Stansfield worked really hard on it, she, she gets a lot of text messages from me on weekends and nights and, and so on, and she's still working on the issues and, and the problems on, on that particular thing. But I want to kind of go back to this, this school, Monahan Manor, and, um, Maynard Homes that are being built. One of the things in the city is, as we build things such as this school, Monahan Manor, and Maynard Homes, is a lot of people get unhappy when we're doing these changes, because we're building up, we're, we're blocking their sun, we're taking away their trees. And there's no doubt about it, we're doing it. And we plow through. We do hear every complaint, every tear, every yelling that is, that is happening, and we keep asking them to be patient because we're doing it for the greater good. Monahan Manor, we made a lot of people have homes, they have washer and dryers in their homes. Um, Maynard Homes, those, the people that will be displaced temporarily, a lot of families will finally have a home that will have a washer and dryer and a better home than they have now. But the people that live around there, yeah, they're, they're going to not necessarily have sun that they had before, and these are homes that have been there for a long time. It's hard. It's hard to balance this. We had a lot of people that complained that they just bought their homes or so on, and we put this school up and we took away their trees. Is it a good thing? Is it a bad thing? I don't know. But we do change, and I, I feel guilty and I feel bad for those people that don't get the things. And, and I do feel sorry for that, but this is a beautiful building, and, and I'm glad we've moved forward, and I've had a lot of sleepless nights during all of that, too. But I want to celebrate this place, I want to celebrate, um, Monahan Manor, and I hope that in four years, I get to see Maynard Homes and all those happy people that will come back to that. So change is not always good, but we do have to do it. So thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I got to tour a little bit when I first got here, too. It's, it's a beautiful school, it's a, be excited for the, the kids that get to go here. And, you know, obviously an honor to Alderman Brian McCarthy, who I never got to know, but I'm sure Alderman Clemens will probably say a little bit when we get to him. And, you know, it's an honor to have it named after, after him. And so, um, thank you for everybody that's worked, from every person that's put a nail in here, to all the people that'll be working in here, you know, starting in a couple of weeks. And I only want to say one more thing, and it's to Alderman Lopez's, um, ordinance, when he says constituency and constituents want this or may want this, we have constituents that are on both sides of the issue. And I have just as many constituents in Ward Eight that have now come to me to not say yes to this, that have said no, told me to say no. So, you know, it's, I, I honestly think that if it was on the ballot, it would not pass in the city. The 45,000 adults, if they all voted, every single one voted, I don't think it would pass. So I believe there's more people, more constituency that wouldn't want us to pass this resolution. And so, I mean, that's, that's where I, I stand on it. And we'll see what Human Affairs does with it, and, you know, see how it gets, uh, how it goes through committee, maybe there's some things added or changed, or taken out of it or whatnot, and, and see where it goes. But, um, yeah, that's where I stand on that. Thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll start by sharing my condolences as well for Phil Mello's family. I, I hadn't heard until just now, this evening, that he had passed, but that is, that's unfortunate. Anybody who spent any, uh, any amount of time downtown has probably come across Phil, and he's well-known down there. And, you know, in, in spite of the challenges and the interactions that some folks may have had with him, as Alderman Lopez pointed out, he has his friends, he has his family, and he will be missed. On that same note, I'd like to recognize the passing of Robbie Summers. Robbie Summers was a educator in the city of Nashua for 22 years. She actually happened to be my sixth-grade teacher at, uh, Charlotte F., and I, uh, learned this week that she had passed at the end of July, so I just want to offer my condolences to her. I won't lie and say that she was my favorite teacher, but she certainly was my toughest teacher, and that sticks with you all those years later. So condolences to her, uh, her loved ones who will certainly miss her. Onto some happier notes. How about this building? You know, uh, everybody's really said what can be said about this, but it really is, um, it, it's a testament to the value that we place in our, uh, our school district and the education of our students here in Nashua. It's a testament to, um, Brian McCarthy's service to the city, and his, um, his family should be immensely proud that they have this to, uh, hang their hat on and, um, you know, show for all the years of service that Brian gave to the city. I'd like to congratulate everybody who was involved in putting on the summer stroll. For anybody who did get down there, that was a lot of fun for a first-year event. What a rousing success. I got down there late, so I missed folks who were there earlier. I did run into Alderman Sullivan and Alderman Tibado while I was there, and, man, I turned that corner, and I was amazed at how packed it was, people having fun. I ran into some colleagues from work, and, um, a bunch of them are already asking me, uh, if it's going to happen next year, so I hope it does. I hope it's bigger. I want to give a shout-out to the folks over at Rage Cage, who celebrated their grand reopening at 37 East Hollis Street this weekend. I got to go spend some time with them, mark the occasion. I got to, uh, meet Ted and his team, see what they're doing there. I'd actually never been to the old location, but the new location in the, uh, the old Headlines building is really something. If you get the opportunity, definitely go check it out, talk to Ted and his team. They're doing a lot of fun things there, and there's more to come. There's businesses that are, uh, plotting moves to, uh, that East Hollis Street corridor, and it's, um, I really feel like it's going to brighten up that area, so I'm excited to see what comes next. I'm surprised I'm the first one to mention Nashua Goes Back to School. It's going to be held on August 22nd at the Nashville Public Library Courtyard, 5:00 to 6:30. Everybody can come out with their kids, meet their principals, get a bag of school supplies. Uh, I would recommend, if you are going to go, go early, because parking fills up. It's, uh, always a very well-attended event. And finally, Madam President, I'd like to, um, recognize some constituents of mine that have joined us here this evening. We have some folks from the Voices of Major Drive Leadership Group. They've recently conducted a, a leadership training program that they've graduated from. These are all Ward Seven residents who have become very active in their community, have really shown some investment in their neighborhood, in their community, and the things that they care about and want to see for it. So I just want to recognize them all here and congratulate them on their efforts. It's really, really great to see more people involved like that. So kudos to you all. Thank you.
Alderman Clemens.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. So, yes, as everyone has mentioned, uh, we are in a beautiful setting. And I know that, uh, that my friend Brian is looking down and smiling on us this evening, and I'm sure very proud of, of this building that has his name on it. The only other thing I, I wanted to say is, uh... The only other thing I, I wanted to say is, uh, I wished he would have seen it. Life is, um, life is short, and for me, through some personal things, I've been going through this last year, I can tell you that you need to enjoy every day. Take the time that, that you have and enjoy every day, because you don't know what's going to happen the next day. So, thank you.
Thank you. I would, I would like to mention the work of the Nashville Housing and Redevelopment Authority on Monahan Manor. They took 48 very rundown units and built 216 homes for the current residents, the residents who were there before the demolition. More than 50% of those residents came back to live in a new home. Those who didn't got a Section 8 portable voucher and were able to move anywhere in the United States that they wanted to live, which I think, for a lot of people, is, is very, very good, because, you know, if you have family somewhere and you, and you, you don't want to be stuck in one place, if you have the option to move somewhere else, and that's what, you know, quite a few of those people did. 48 homes to 216 homes is huge. It's really, really difficult today for developers to build affordable housing. They had to get creative, and they had to really think outside the box to get this done. And I know that when, when the folks moved, the 48 families that were there, they worked with a relocation specialist who was exceedingly good at what they do. The Housing Authority never received one complaint about the move, about the transition, moving people out and moving those same people back in. I give them kudos for all the work they did, and, and I know that meant a lot to the Housing Authority to make sure the people that were there were treated fairly and got first dibs on moving back into a new home. So they, they did a tremendous job with that. I'd also like to thank the Voices of Major Drive for coming out. I know they've been very involved with the Housing Authority, because Major Drive is going to be the next project that they have coming up. If it's anything like the project that they just completed, I think you're going to be in good hands, and I think things are going to go tremendously well for you. So thank you, and thank you for stepping up and, and being the Voices of Major Drive. I know it means a lot to the Housing Authority, and I'm sure it means a lot to your neighbors as well. I'd also like to, oh, and Tom Monahan, who they named it after. Tom Monahan is a developer. I've known Tom for over 40 years. He, um, he put his heart and soul into this, and it's aptly named Monahan Manor. So I just wanted to say how much I appreciated the work that Tom Monahan did and the other commissioners at the Housing Authority. I know Eric Wilson was very much involved in, in the development of this project, as were the other three commissioners, but Tom Monahan and Eric Wilson took the lead on getting this done, and as well as the staff of the Nashville Housing Authority. I mean, they, they have a small staff and, and a big job, and I'm looking forward to their completion of the Major Drive apartments, homes, I should say, homes. I would also like to talk about how wonderful I think this school is, and I know that Brian McCarthy would be very proud to see what has become of this vacant lot. Brian had a vision, you know, 25 years ago, when this property was vacant, and he knew that we were going to need a school here, and today, here it is, and with his name on it, I think it's very well-deserved. And that's all I have. Committee announcements. I'll start over here. No committees. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. Tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, Room 208 is a meeting of the Building and Industrial Development Authority, also known as BIDA.
Thank you. Alderman Lopez.
Given the Paris Committee's meeting on August 19th, because we were with the Alderman Committee.
Okay. Alderman Clemens.
At the Department of Health and Human Services, this meeting on August 21st.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the August 13, 2024 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be so adjourned.
The motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, motion carries, and we are adjourned at 9:05 PM. Thank you, everyone, and I hope you all enjoyed seeing the school.
And there was much rejoicing.